Members, it is the appointed time and the quorum is formed. This is the meeting of the Public Accounts Committee on the reports number twenty eighty-two of the Director of Audits, Chapter Two, Emergency Dental Services and Elderly Dental Care Supports. This is the first public hearing. We have already decided on the arrangement so that all parties today will have reasonable chance to make submissions. The committee will submit the reports to the council. Concerning the Director of Audit's report and also the work of the Audit Commission, we are not going to comment on these before the submission of the reports. Today, our witnesses are Professor Lo Chong Ma, Secretary for Health, the Director for Health, Dr. Ronald Lamb, and Dr. Tony Copat Singh, the Chief Executive of the H A and the team. Does any member need to declare interest? If not, I now pass the floor to the Director for Audit, Professor Nelson Lam, to brief us on the reports. Thank you, Chairman. I thank the Chairman for inviting me to attend the public hearing on the accounts. Now I'll brief members on the Chapter Two, Emergency Dental Services and Elderly Dental Care Supports, under Report Number Eighty-Two. I give my heartfelt thanks to the Health Bureau, Departments of Health and the H A for their cooperation during our audit. Once again, I thank the colleagues. There are four parts to the chapter. The first part is the background of the audit. Emergency dental services include the G P sessions or general public sessions provided by the Departments of Health in the eleven government dental clinics. And also the services offered for pay hospital in patients and referred patients as the oral maxillofacial surgery and dental clinics, O M, as the C S of the D H and the Hospital Authority. About dental care support to elderly persons, it includes outreach dental care program for the elderly, O D C P, and the Elderly Healthcare Voucher Scheme, E H V S, and also the Elderly Dental Assistance Program, E D A P, under the Community Care Fund, C C F. The results of the audit are set out in Parts Two and Part Four. Part Two is for emergency dental services. Part Three is for general support, dental care support to elderly persons, and the final part is about the progress and implementation of the dental care program for elderly people. We have made ten recommendations to the D H, twenty-two to the H A, and three for the hospitals. Now I thank the colleagues for agreeing to our recommendations. Thank you. Thank you, Professor Nam. I'm now going to invite Professor Lo, Secretary for Health, to give us an opening remark. Chairman, members, the Health Bureau, D H and the H A thank the Audit Commission for the recommendations made under Report Number Eighty-Two of the Director of Audit, Chapter Two, concerning Emergency Dental Services and Elderly Dental Care Supports. Tooth fake is bad. The public is very concerned about the availability of dental care services. Before the announcements of, before the, before publishing the report, the Health Bureau has implemented some improvement measures. Now concerning the recommendations, we are going to study closely so as to effectively enhance our public dental care services. Because of COVID nineteen pandemic and the shortage of manpower, quota for general public sessions has dropped significantly during the pandemic. Now with this shortage of dental manpower and also the updates in our service process, the Departments of Health was unable to increase the number of quota immediately. As a result, it was announced in the two thousand twenty-three policy address that starting next year, we're going to collaborate with N G Os to deliver new service model to the underprivileged groups and enhance the service capacity. Concerning the waiting arrangements for quota disc for public sessions, starting this July, the Departments of Health is going to adjust the registration time for the preliminary registration arrangements from twelve A M of the day of the session to eight P M the day prior. Now, after registration, patients only need to report to the clinic half an hour before the appointed time and have their identity cards checked, and then they can receive service. The improved arrangement can avoid the pain of queuing overnight and making multiple journeys to the clinics. The report singled out the this, the quota disc allocation arrangements, distribution arrangements of the Monafon Dental Clinic in Saikong. Now, starting this Thursday, we are going to adjust the this allocation arrangements for that clinic from eleven A M to one P M. The service hours will begin at one thirty P M. With this arrangement, after registration and getting a quota disc, patients can receive service immediately without making a return journey. And we are going to implement the online registration and this distribution system. Patients no longer have to physically get a disc. The online platform will provide information of the number of remaining quota discs of the eleven clinics. Now, we have started the work of developing this system, which will be launched shortly. Concerning the dental services provided by public hospitals, the D H and the H A are going to improve information management, for example, the number of attendants and headcounts of patients. We're good, we're also going to keep the, keep record of the waiting time for first appointments of various services. Now, the dental services provided by the D H will be consolidated under the O M S D Cs under the H A. After the integration, the information, the record keeping will be improved. Concerning the outreach services for elderly people, during the pandemic, R C H Es and daycare centers for elderly people have opted out of the program. After the epidemic, there is still much room for increasing the participation rates. We're going to study the reasons behind the low participation rates and increase our publicity efforts. We are also going to adopt measures to ensure that N G Os under the schemes will perform the duties under the service agreements. Now, we are going to provide more guidelines for the D H colleagues who are responsible for monitoring the service of N G Os. Concerning the recommendations on healthcare voucher scheme through seminars, we're going to introduce and explain the programs to healthcare service providers to encourage them to participate in this scheme. We are also going to adopt measures to remind dentists under the program that if there are any changes to the information, they must notify the D H. Concerning the Elderly Dental Assistance Program or E D A P administered under the C C F, in this year's third quarter, we are going to improve the, enhance the E D A P so that eligible elderly persons can get services like tooth extraction, tooth feeling and scaling even without receiving a removable denture. Now, we are going to study other recommendations made by the reports, including incorporating clauses in relation to safeguarding national security in the F S A signed with N G Os and also ensure that long outstanding cases are dealt with promptly. We attach importance to the dental health care of the public, and we are going to review the provision of such services. By the end of two thousand twenty-two, we have established the working group on oral health and dental care. Now, in the interim reports, the working group recommends developments of primary dental health care and help the public to conduct self-dental health care so as to prevent onset of dental diseases. The working group also recommend deepening the services and provide targeted services to the underprivileged groups defined by the report. So as to achieve the care policy of raising public awareness and improving oral health, we would please to answer questions. Thank you. Thank you, Secretary. Now, I will open the floor to members so that they can ask questions to the witnesses. Now, this chapter, members in charge is Mr. Edmund Wong. Now, I will allow fifteen minutes for other members and twenty minutes for Mr. Edmund Wong. Thank you, Chairman. Now, from the Secretary's speech, he pledged to follow up on the recommendations in the report, and I applaud the Secretary. Now, I only have one question, paragraph one point five and table two. Now, page twenty-nine mentioned that the services of the D H will be integrated under the H A's hospitals. I want to ask about the historical background. Why were the dental services provided separately by the D H and the H A? Professor Lo, I will invite Dr. Ronald Lamb, the Director of Health, to answer this question. Dr. Lamb, thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Wong. Now, in the public hospitals, we are providing services via the O M S D Cs and the dental hospitals. Now, compared with general dental clinics, they will deal with more complex cases. For example, if a patient suffered from traffic accidents or if complex oral surgery is needed, then the patients will be cared for by public hospitals. Historically, for more complex cases, for example, with open fracture, patients for open fractures, such cases can't be dealt with by dentists in the private sector, so they would be sent to the public hospitals. Now, preliminarily, these services were provided for by the hospitals under the H A. After there was a surge of demand, the D H also provided such services. So that's the historical background. Now, allow me to supplement to on this. The division of work was decided back when the H A was established. Mr. Edmund Wong, I don't have any other questions. Paragraph twenty-nine says that the resources will be consolidated. I think this is very important. I don't have any other questions for this part. Ms. Carmen Khan. Thank you, Chairman. May I follow up on the Secretary's speech? On the government strategy. May I? Yes, please. Thank you. The Secretary mentioned that in two thousand twenty-two, a working group on oral health and dental care was set up. So maybe the, maybe the Director of Audit can answer this question. The Policy Bureau took the initiative to set up a working group by the end of two thousand twenty-two to review the strategy for delivering dental care services. So what is the purpose of this audit exercise? Second question. There is already a working group, and also the recommendation has already been implemented by the government. So what's the point of this exercise? May I invite the Secretary to tell us the purpose of establishing the working group? I think that highlights the proactiveness and the collaboration between bureaus in this term of the government. Of course, the Audit Commission has the responsibility to study issues which would affect people's livelihood. At the same time, the Health Bureau and also the D H feel the concern of the public on the delivery of our dental care services. So that's why we set up the working group chaired by the Permanent Secretary, Mr. Thomas Chen. There is no conflict between the two efforts. We appreciate the recommendations made by the Audit Commission. Professor Nelson Lam, please switch on to Professor's mic. The speaker is not coming through. Please switch on his mic. Am I coming through? Thank you, Chairman. I fully agree with the Secretary. In the government, we are the auditing, auditing department, but we are a team. We are rising up to meet the aspiration of the public. On one hand, the public is aspiring for enhanced dental services. So that's why we decided to review the emergency dental services and elderly dental care support offered by the government. Second, the report is about the strategy of service delivery. So I must stress that we will not look at the merits of the policy. We are not going to make any recommendations on the government's policy. We are just looking at the operational aspect. And with that exercise, we can provide advice to the working group and even the Departments of Health and the H A. Now, with the reports and with an updated policy, then the Audit Commission would not select this area for our audit. Ms. Carmen Khan. I thank the government for explaining the reason. Some members of the public also asked me why, with the existence of the working group set up by the government, the Audit Commission still chose this area for the audit. So that's the government taking the initiative to review the long-term policy of dental health care. And then the Audit Commission is taking the perspective of the effectiveness of the delivery of the service. So I thank the Secretary for his explanation. Now, one point six, paragraph expenditure. In year two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three, the total expenditure for the public hospitals on dental health care was forty-five million dollars. Now, note six, under the relevance had, the expenditure is some one point two billion dollars. Now, the expenditure made by the H A was ninety-four point nine billion dollars or ninety-three point four billion dollars. So will there be any changes to the subsides given the change in service delivery?
I'd like to defer to Dr. Tony Coe from the H A. Dr. Coe, as you have heard from the Bureau, H A provides a small amount of services through our O M S D Cs, which is not available from the Department of Health. It was provided previously by the subvented hospitals, as we, that would include surgeries and and a small amount of outpatient service. So we tie in with what the government has been providing. What about changes to the expenditure? Dr. Coe? Will maintain the current level of service. Since the demand for dental service is increasing, would there be more allocation for dental services for the elderly? Well, we are mainly all responsible for major surgeries such as oxym, oxilofacial surgery and neck and head cancer cases. Professor Lo, as Dr. Coe has said, they mainly provide a service for complicated cases for inpatient only. They are not providing day-to-day the dental care service or treatment for the general public. But we, our focus now is on prevention. The D of H provides services for the occasional the service needs in the outpatient clinics. Well, I understand that. I think we should inform the public that the dental service is provided in a prescribed scope. There are eleven dental clinics from the D of H. There are many for emergencies cases to the service providers. And the, and the H A is providing mainly O M C D, O M S D C services, maxillofacial surgery. But I'm most concerned about the expenditure, that is, in paragraph one point six, are there going to be greater allocations to the H A for the revised scope of service? Secretary for Health, the dental service only accounts for a very small part of the expenditure provided incurred by the H A and the D of H. It's mainly expanding resources on prevention, not on dental treatment. We have dental services for students and other outreach program for the elderly and other in, in two thousand twenty-three, we expand about one point one billion and, and the revise service for the twenty-three, twenty-four is a five point three billion, and we're not just counting dental services for the D of H as a whole. Perhaps I can invite Mr. Thomas Chen, the Permanent Secretary, to supplement. Mr. Chen, whereas the Secretary has said, the resources that we have devoted for dental services can be categorized in a number of areas. The H A is responsible for complicated surgery cases, and the D of H is usually is mainly providing service for student dental care and also elderly care assistance, elderly dental assistance program. And we also provide assistance through the healthcare voucher scheme. We spend about three hundred and forty million dollars and the twenty-three to twenty-four, the more than four hundred million dollars for such services. The second major category of suspension comes in the form of services for those families on C S S A. And they can ask for the assistance under the C S S A for then for ex, for expanded, for expenses incurred for dental services, whether for prevention or for treatment. We spent about one hundred and ten million dollars on this item, and the same for twenty-three, twenty-four. Professor Lo, any supplement? Ah, no. Ms. Khan, my next question is about table one. There's a quota disc and attendance. According to the the Bureau, the drop in the disc quotas has to do with shortage of manpower. If we look at the percentage, the, the, the drop in this quota has been substantial. Is shortage of dental care personnel the major reason? Are there other reasons as well? Apart from manpower shortage, the question of manpower shortage has been worsening, and we have also implemented new procedures because of the COVID pan, pandemic, because the dental service can be a, a channel of infection. So we have changed the dental service procedure in, to cater for the need to tackle the pandemic and prevent the spread of COVID. Maybe I can invite my call, uh, Dr. Ronald Lamb to supplement. Well, we have seen a rebound in this quota, that vacancy rate for dentists in the D of H is one hundred and eight or thirty percent of the establishment. The second reason is as the Secretary indicates, during the three-year COVID pandemic, we have been modifying and enhancing the prevention protocol to prevent COVID and also to ensure safety of patients. For example, before oral examination, the disinfection of the oral cavity is, was required. And also there were, we, we have also carry out more extensively the cleansing and disinfection of the consultation room. And also W H O has also issued some advisory to communities around the world, and that is the major indicator is on the preservation of the number of teeth among the elderly. That's why traditionally, my department would only carry out emergency extractions and prevention. But now with the advancement of technology, we can go for some alternatives other than extraction, such as a root canal operation and and because we want to preserve teeth as far as possible in, among patients. Therefore, we will now understand in a more in-depth manner the medical history of the patient to see if there is any way that their teeth can be preserved. Or in the public healthcare sector, including dental service, we are mainly in the business of providing service to the disadvantaged or those who are economically less well-off. According to our dentist colleague, those who are queuing for the services are mainly not for emergency services as such. Therefore, the, the Working Group on Dental Care has looked at the issues from an interdisciplinary perspective. From an interdisciplinary perspective. That's why we think we might as well invest or allocate more resources for the disadvantaged groups. So that more services will be made available to them. Under this new operation mode. And service delivery approach, the quotas will be more than double than what they are. At present, we provide some two hundred this. Twenty thousand uh. This and. In the future, we are going to provide forty thousand for those in need of such services. Doctor Khan, can you tell us how how much will be, how much more will be provided? Uh please wait until I call your name. The camera will pan to you after I've done that. Doctor Lam. At present, the this quotas is twenty thousand for the ordinary outpatient clinics. We're going to provide additionally forty thousand. Through the new service delivery mode, that is a delivery through N G Os. So altogether, there will be sixty thousand in terms of this quotas. Thank you for your supplement. You talk about new service delivery mode, targeting the disadvantaged group with economic, with financial needs. And also, the this quota will go up from twenty thousand to sixty thousand. And you are going to do this through the services provided by N G O. The short manpower shortage, may I ask a supplementary question on this thirty percent? What are you going to do to uh? Cater for this problem? We face a shortage of dentists for 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 one thousand. In our population, we will only go zero one three seven dentists. So we are now going to amend the dentist registration ordinance. Among the amendments, we are going to allow for the. Uh allow registration of overseas trained. Dentists, including the offering of limited registration to some of them. As for outpatient dental clinic, we have to consider how best to utilize our resources. At present, our outpatient clinic doesn't turn any any patient away. Originally, it was meant to for emergency cases and also also the patient should be from a. Uh underprivileged background. But at present, we we do not differentiate between who are actually. In need of emergency services or who are actually from an underprivileged background. We don't turn anyone away, so the some of the quotas are taken up by. Those people who are not in the target groups. And that was therefore, we need to consider how best to utilize our resources to provide the needed support. To our patients. Oh Mister Luke Chung-Hung. I thank the bureau for responding rapidly. Uh to the recommendations of the audit director of audit's recommendation, this is commendable. On one point three to one point five, paragraph one point three to one point five. As matter of historical legacy, the dental services services are mainly provided to civil servants. But what about the service utilizations? How many of the quotas are taken up? By civil servants? I'm not against civil servants making use of dental services provided to them. But are there other choices for civil servants other than going to a. Government outpatient clinic or government dental clinic? Can they offer private dental services and get reimbursed? So that more quotas from the government dental clinic can be made available to other. Patients in need. There's a shortage of dentists. There are fourteen dentists in thirteen service units or clinics. And therefore, the the service time of dentists is very precious indeed. Has the D O B H. Realized that there are people who do not need to get emergency services. If I go to a private dental dentist. You get all kinds of service, but for governments dental service is mainly for extraction. If you go to a private dentist. And the advice is to get a tooth extracted, the patient may hesitate and. And rather not do anything about it. But in in such a case, the time of the dentist is wasted. Can there be some triage system so that the nurses in the dental clinic can do the job of? Uh triage. The patient may be advised that you need filling, not extractions, so perhaps you should go to, you should see a private dentist. Can some kind of triage service be provided in the clinic? As for the triage of dental service for civil servants and outpatient clinics. Are deferred to the director of health. In the past, in the recent three years. In the number of attendants in government dental clinic for civil service. Twenty twenty one, seven hundred and eight thousand six hundred. Twenty twenty two, five hundred eighty five, seven hundred. Five hundred thirty thousand, three hundred. Uh the attendance has been affected by Covid as well as the manpower shortage. So you can see the numbers have changed quite a bit over these years. And among them, how many more can be provided? All along. Emergency services are provided to outpatient dental clinic. It and it take up about two percent of the total quotas. If the manpower shortage persists. And we allocate more resources for one service, that will mean the. Reduction of service for the other services. That's why. We want to achieve a focus on the major objective for dental care, dental services. As the secretary has said. According to our colleagues' clinical information. Sometimes, after the consultation, uh some patient may decide, might decide not to go for extraction. But these cases are not common. I'm thankful for the director for this observation that we should strengthen. The collection of information after consultation and compile the information systematically. But we don't want to. Uh but instead of adding another layer of service to this operation. We might as well devote our resources to serving the underprivileged and those. Uh citizens or patients in need. So in terms of providing a triage service. I think we're the the better way is to ask, to inform the patient. That there are other alternatives to extraction because the major, the main focus is to preserve teeth.
Thank you, Doctor Lam, Mister Luke Chung-Hung. Thank you, Chair. I think he has answered, you know, one of my questions. Only two percent of the resources have been allocated for the general public since nineties, forties. When I look at the note, I thought we're talking about the history. It was since nineteen forty seven, it was forty seven years ago. But still, the figure is now only remaining at two percent. So I think this is just a symbolic surface. And since there is the dental service for the public service, we're setting aside just a little bit of that for the general public. But here and now, we're in twenty twenty four. I think this small fraction of two percent should be reviewed. And I hope that the government will conduct a comprehensive review. Try to strike a balance between the benefits for the civil servants and the service for the general public. I think it is very rare to have a policy which has remained unchanged since nineteen forty seven. I hope it will not remain the same until twenty forty seven. Administration has also told me that not too many people will not have their teeth extracted if the dentist decides so. I don't know whether this is good or bad. On the one hand, it seems that not too many people are wasting the resources for G P sessions. And they just have an examination by the dentist and then they go away without any treatment or tooth extraction. But other cases, there's some of the teeth will be extracted, but not on a necessary basis. Well, you said that the policy is to retain natural teeth. So how do you sort of strike the balance between a teeth extraction and not to conduct such an extraction? So how would the dentist explain to the patients in this regard? Can you explain a bit more? Will you be giving them some referral cases? Or will you explain clearly to them about the pros and cons of extracting their teeth? Will you tell them that there will be other services available which are not that expensive? Because I think for the elderly, they are afraid to go to the private dentist because the fees are high for them. You also talk about the voucher. But for the healthcare voucher, have you conducted any study as to the cost per case? Or have you conducted any assessment as to whether there will be exorbitant fees charged for the voucher scheme? Well, some elderly would come to us and tell us that if you go to the dentist who accept voucher, they will charge us higher. So they would use up all their vouchers in one go. So has the audit conducted any study in this aspect? Mister Luke, you want to ask the audit department or you want to ask the administration? First question is for the administration. Secretary?
For the procedure regarding G P sessions, I would defer to Doctor Ronald Lamb. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Mister Luke. For the two percentage of the service capacity, this is a historical figure and has been there for a long time. At that time, two percent of the service was used for the general public. And it's taken out from the service from the civil servants. So this is an extra two percent that we have set aside for the general public. So we have conducted a review recently and we had to decide how or whether to raise this percentage. And also, we think that the percentage increase should be focused on the deprived who have financial difficulties. And that's why we want to increase the this by forty thousand numbers. On the other hand, for explanation to the patients. Well, during the Covid pandemic and up to now, all the colleagues from the dental service. Have tried to explain the case to the patients. They may say, they will not just say that your teeth is loose and has to be extracted. They were trying to look at the history and conduct a holistic holistic examination. And try to explain to the patient as to whether the teeth should be extracted or not, or whether there are other options. For example, maybe a simple filling will resolve the issue. So that is why the current model is that we want to try to really retain natural teeth as far as possible. And we hope that there will be more cases which do not involve tooth extraction. For the elderly voucher scheme, I would like to supplement with some figures. For twenty twenty three. The number of claims for the voucher scheme. Is about some three hundred. Third, three hundred and twenty million. Sorry, it's three point two six billion dollars. And the claims for dental service is about four hundred and ten million. So we have a system to ensure that the vouchers will not be abused. At the back end, we try to collect data on the claims regarding the. Voucher claims. And we may notice cases that the number of claims amount is very high. Or the number of claims of a certain service provider is very great. And we will conduct investigations to see whether there are any odd circumstances. If the elderly thinks that the vouchers have been used wrongly by the service provider, then we will try to follow up. And from the statistics, we can see that the uh. Claims from twenty twenty five to twenty. Twenty three. The amount of bad claims is about point nine percent. But right now, I do not have the figures concerning the breakdown for dental cases, so I can provide the information later. Uh Professor Khan, Director of Audit.
Well, the Department of Health has provided some information, I can provide some explanation. For the audit department, we do not use a thought oriented approach. But for our procedures, is that we try to find out whether there are fraudulent cases. For this particular report, you have not seen anything about the detection of fraudulent cases. Uh that is because we haven't found such cases. But for the number of claims for dental services under the elderly voucher scheme. You can look at paragraph three point three five. We have an average figure of the amount of claim there. Uh further question, sorry, I have to extend the time a bit. For the oral health survey, it was conducted once every ten years. Which paragraph are you referring to, one point eleven? The interesting thing was that the O H S was conducted in two oh oh one. And the teeth of our community is quite good at that time. But people in Hong Kong tend to ignore oral health. And they may be reluctant to see the dentist. I think this is quite contradictory. So because the cost of going to a dentist is quite high, maybe it's not that affordable. But now we have a lot of schemes.
But now we have a lot of schemes. For example, like the elderly healthcare voucher, we also have the CCF schemes. And also, there are other ways of treating a bad tooth instead of extraction. So would you do some simple filling and include that under the emergency dental service? Because, you know, filling doesn't take up that much time. Some of the simple filling cases may take just about 10 minutes. So can you include that under the emergency dental service instead of asking the patient to have their teeth extracted? Is that possible? Dr. Ronald Lam? Thank you, Chairman. Well, thank you, Mr. Lu, for the suggestion. Well, under the new service model, we try to engage the NGOs to provide dental service. And that's where we see that we have to expand the service volume. And we want to achieve several objectives. The first one is to increase the service spot, next is the service volume, and then also the service scope. And we have also included filling as one of the service available. And through the three measures of enhancement that I've talked about, we want to have early identification and treatment so as to enhance people's oral health. Mr. Lu has asked about the oral health survey. It is conducted once every 10 years. And I think this is helpful for us to draw up our dental health policy. It provides us with some solid figures and foundation for mapping out the new policy or changing our policy. Back in 2021, we have conducted another survey. But because of the COVID epidemic, the work was delayed and the report would be released within this year. And then we would have information about the oral health of people of different age groups and then also people's behavior and how they can maintain a better oral health. So we have covered five areas. So it is children aged below 5, 5 to 10, P12, from 35 to 44, and then also elderly above 65 to age 74. So after the release of the survey results, we will try to see how to better allocate our resources. Thank you. Mr. Lu, any supplement?
No. Ms. Yong Hui Yan? Chairman, I have two questions on paragraph 1.4. A lot of colleagues has asked about the emergency dental service. We understand that that will cover the prescription of pain relief, treatment of oral abscess, and then teeth extraction. And it is also said that the dentist can provide advice based on the individual needs of the patients. And the patients may speak dental care services provided by the private sector or NGO. So I would like to ask about the procedure. Does that mean that after going to the emergency dental service, then the dentist will refer them to the private sector or the NGOs for treatment? Is that the case? So I would like to know about the procedures. Or is it that a patient, after receiving the dental service, there is no need for them to go to the private sector for treatment?
Dr. Ronald Lam? Thank you, Chairman, and Ms. Yong? Well, the current practice is that we provide emergency service. So apart from tendering advice to the patients, we would also provide suitable treatment. And for the follow-up treatment, it may not be conducted in the same clinic. So the patient can go to the private sector or the NGOs for further follow-up treatment. Ms. Yong? So does that mean they have to pay for the service from the private sector or the NGOs for further treatment? Yes, that's the case. Now, after the treatment at the GP sessions, we focus on emergency. So if there are other follow-up treatments, for example, after a teeth extraction, maybe they need to have some tooth filling, then they have to go to the private sector or the NGOs for follow-up. Ms. Yong, thank you.
I also have a question on table one. We can see that since 2018 and 19, the number of attendance is 37, some 37,000. And then by 23, 24, the figure has decreased to about 11, some 11,000. It has increased by almost one-third. We have heard from the administration that they have manpower shortage. That's why the number of patients have decreased and the number of disallocated have decreased. Also, now you say that there is now a manpower shortage of about 30%. But if I look at table three for the attendance at hospital dental services like the OMSDCs under the DH and under the HA, we have the figures there. And it also starts from 2018, 19. For the DH, it has decreased from 67,100 and it decreased to 34,500 by 23, 24 at a decrease of 48%. But for the HA, the figure has decreased from some 15,000 to some 15,000. It has decreased by about 16%. So I don't understand why the figure of decrease has increased by 48%. But for the HA OMSDCs, the similar figure has only decreased by 16%. So the figures don't really tally because you tell us you have a manpower shortage of 30%. If that's the case, then the decrease of attendance rates for the two OMSDCs under HA and under DH should be similar. Is it because the salary of DH is lower than that of HA? That's why more dentists have left the DH. Otherwise, the attrition rates for the two OMSDCs should be similar. So why is it possible for the HA to retain a high attendance rate? So why is this discrepancy? Dr. Lam?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Lam. There are several issues here. Your interpretation is correct. So from 2018, the figures have been gradually decreasing for the two OMSDCs. And by year 23, 24, I just want to point out that even for table one and table three, the figure is only up to October 2023. So this is not a year-round figure, not a whole-year figure. So if you take the figure up to the 31st of January, the decrease is about 15,965. That is for table one. The decrease is more significant. That's because of the COVID pandemic. We now have a shortage of some 30,000, 30% staff. That's because of the COVID pandemic. And then also, we have been undertaking a lot of anti-epidemic work. We have assigned some 200 dentists to undertake such work. For example, they have to stay in the testing centers and then also the vaccination centers for COVID. So they have been redeployed there. So we noticed that about 70% of our colleagues have participated in anti-epidemic work then. That's why the figures of the GP sessions have decreased substantially. Now, the number of this has gone back to some 20,000. I have just explained why we can't do more because the resources should be allocated for the underprivileged. So that's the new model. And secondly, for the concept of oral health, there have been changes. The policy is to retain natural health as far as possible. So that's why more resources have been allocated for that. And we have more investigation. And then we have also had to do a lot of explanation to the patients regarding the options possible for them. So because of these several factors, the number of disallocated cannot be increased further. And you can see that because of the manpower shortage, we have less attendance rate. For the public hospitals, you can see that the decrease is not that significant. The main reason is that for the HA OMSDCs, there are three referral cases. The first one is the general outpatient. They may be referred by the private dentist or doctors. The second one is the referral form within the hospitals, other divisions. And then also the hospital inpatients. So that's why the number of patients may fluctuate according to the number of referrals. So this is one of the reasons why you see that the drop in figures is not that significant despite there are changes. Again, the figure is only up to October 2023. If you look at the year-round figure, it will be slightly different and not much different.
Ms. Yong? Chairman, 2023 and 2024, that's the figure up to October. So the comparison may be unfair to you. But if we just look at 2022 to 2023, for dental clinics under the HA, the attendance rate was higher than 2018 to 19. Maybe there were more referrals to you. But my point is, the HA didn't experience the shortage of manpower in dental healthcare workers. Now, I understand why there was a reduction during the epidemic. However, for the HA, the number climbed back more rapidly. So for the HA, it wasn't because of a shortage of manpower which explained the lower attendance rates. Now, for dental clinics under the HA, there wasn't a shortage or at least there wasn't an accurate manpower shortage for them. Their attendance rates even rose. On the other hand, for the Department of Health, 67,000 in 2018. And then in 2013, there was 10,000 patients fewer. So that's why I asked, was it because of the difference in salary? Because and then there was more dentists left the Departments of Health and joined the hospital authority. And if that was the case, would you consider improving the remuneration for the dental offices in the Departments of Health? There are reports that the dental officers' salary was $64,000 per month. That's the figure two years ago. I don't know if that's the most updated figure. So would you consider improving the remuneration for the dental offices to retain them? Dr. Ronald Lam? Thank you, Ms. Yong. Now, oral, maxillofacial discipline is a specialist discipline. The service provided by these clinics are very different. Now, as of the 1st of April, there are only four vacancies under the OMSDCs. So compared with the average shortage of 30%, it is much lower. Now, there is a slight drop in the service capacity or the attendance rates, but that is not very significant. And we would keep tab of the reasons of why the dentists left. Now, besides retirement, most of the dentists who left the government service joined the private sector or have left Hong Kong because of family reasons or for immigration. So from our exit interviews, it doesn't seem that it is because of the low salaries in the public sector. Of course, there is still a significant difference compared with the private sector. Now, on the side notes, the salary for a new recruit is $69,000. I just want to know whether there is a significant difference between the dentists employed by the DH and the HA. Dr. Lam?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm positive that there is a difference. However, I don't have the figure for the HA. Now, for the starting salary for our dental officer, it is $69,000 per month. Secretary? Allow me to elaborate. For dental offices hired by the Departments of Health, they are paid in accordance with the pay scale. For doctors or dentists hired by the HA, they would follow their pay scale. For dental officers or dentists hired by the governments, they are under a different system compared with the HA. When the HA was established years ago, they adopted a pay scale comparable to that of the master pay scale, but still different. Now, at the time when the HA was established, some dental offices in the DH migrated to the HA. I would not comment on which pay scale is more attractive. In terms of the increments, pay increment system and also the salary points, there are two different systems. Chairman, it's my personal view, but if there is a difference, should the Departments of Health conduct a survey among the dental offices, whether they would like to have a pay rise? I think it is well of conducting a survey so that the service capacity of the dental clinics under the DH can be enhanced. I see a difference here. Now, with more dental manpower under the Departments of Health, civil servants can enjoy better service as well. So my point is whether we can reduce the attrition rates by enhancing the remuneration package. That's your view. So next member, Mr. Paul Se.
I would like to follow up on the members' questions and also the secretary's speech. Now, for civil servants, they have very steady pay and they enjoy dental benefits. Now, at present, for civil servants, if they require emergency dental services, do they have to queue? And for general dental services, how long do they have to queue?
Dr. Ronald Lam? Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Jay. Now, for civil servants who have an urgent dental condition, they don't have to make a booking. They just need to go to the nearby dental clinics to receive treatment. So every day, the quota of the dental clinics would be reserved for the civil servants with emergency needs. Now, the service hours are 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. What about non-emergency services? Dr. Lam? Clarification, sorry. The service hours are 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. That's for emergency dental services. For non-emergency services, they will have to queue? Yes, they will have to queue. Now, allow me to look up the figure. Now, does it mean that for civil servants, if they have a two-day, they will get help during the very same day? Yes, generally speaking, yes, unless their cases are very complex. So for civil servants, service can wait for the patients. For the general public, the patients in need have to wait for the service. Now, allow me to supplement. Over the past three years, in two thousand twenty-one, now there are two separate figures for the queue. Now, for follow-up service and non-emergency specialist dental service. Now, in two thousand twenty-one, for dental follow-up service, the waiting time was four to six, four to sixteen months. Two thousand twenty-two, eight to thirty-seven months. Two thousand twenty-three, eight to forty-four months. That's for dental follow-up service. For non-emergent, for non-emergency dental services, two thousand fifty-one, six to forty-two months. Two thousand twenty-two, four to forty-seven months. Twenty-three, one to forty-eight months. So it seems that the longest waiting time has been rising. That's because of the continuous shortage in dental manpower. Now, concerning Mr. Jay's question, whether civil servants don't have to wait and the public needs to wait. Now, there are two factors. The purpose of dental clinics under the government is to fulfill the civil service contract and to provide dental care for civil servants. Now, because of historical reasons, two percent of the resources were set aside for catering the dental service demand of the general public. Now, in time, we decided to move away from this model and involve the private sector in providing the service. Now, there is always the misunderstanding that the government's commitments to provide provision of dental health care only limit, is only limited to GP sessions. That's not true. The most important thing in dental care is prevention. If we have good oral health from a young age, then there is a better chance the public will have good oral health in the future. So we are delivering these services through the student oral health service. And for groups with special needs, for example, the elderly people, we are providing oral care through CCF and also the elderly dental care outreach program. So the point is to provide assistance to the groups in need. I think we are digressing. Come back, coming back to my question and also Mr. Michael Lu's question. The two percents, the two percentage points set aside for providing public service is still the same. I'm not trying to create conflict. Everything, everyone is so riled up about the idea of conflicts nowadays. Now, I'm not trying to create a rift. Is it the case that the government deliberately keep the percentage points, the ratio as two percent? Or is that just a coincidence? Now, concerning the government's dental clinic, there are dentists idling during the working hours because there are no civil servants coming to ask for service, but there are members of the public waiting outside. Is that the case? Now, there are two issues here. Concerning the emergency dental services, the attendance rate is higher than ninety-eight percent, close to a hundred percent. Now, because of public holidays and also typhoons, the attendance rate is not as high as one hundred percent. So basically, it is at full capacity. On the other hand, waiting time for civil servants, as I've reported to the Chairman and Mr. Porce, whether it is follow-up treatment or specialist treatment, the longest waiting time is increasing, so we don't have any surplus capacity. Now, if a patient fail to attend the appointment, then the doctor, the dentist cannot provide the service to the patient. And also, there are a lot of a lot of emergency cases with no prior appointment. So actually, the, all the colleagues are very busy. Now, as the secretary said right from the beginning, toothache is the worst pain. And whether you are a grassroots or from other strata in society, it is a bad thing. Now, for other diseases, you don't have to wait for a quarter disc and you can get help immediately. However, for toothache, you have to wait for help. So you're going to provide more services to the public? We'll have to wait and see. Now, for the correctional services department, for incarcerated persons, how is their dental services? So are there any emergency dental care for the incarcerated persons? Dr. Ronald Lam? Now, we do have programs to help incarcerated persons. Now, we would deploy dental offices to provide simple treatment, dental treatments to incarcerated persons. If prisoners experience complex dental problem, then they would be sent to dental hospitals. Now, I think the most efficient way is to get sent to a dental hospital, since you don't have to wait. So in other words, the incarcerated persons may get help much sooner than the public. Now, the major source of patients for the OMSDCs is by referral. Say, for example, a, an inmate in the prison has an emergence, emergency dental incidence, then he would be sent to the hospital for treatment. Generally speaking, patients would be referred to the hospitals only. Now, if I blackout in the hospital, but at the same time I have a toothache, will I still get a dental treatment from the hospital? Now, for the OMSDCs under the DH, there are three categories of patients. For the first kind, they would receive immediate treatment. These are patients already in the hospital. If they experience a sudden dental problem, they would be triage for immediate treatment. Now, the second category is emergency. Now, this include a traffic accident's patients or a patient with open bone structure or unstoppable hammerhatch after dental treatments. They would get some treatment immediately. For the other, for the last category, that is the semi-urgent cases. Under the triage system, semi-urgent cases would get an appointment from the same day to a week. Now, the Departments of Health is responsible for setting the standard of waiting time for semi-urgent cases. At present, there is not a universal standard because they are not the most urgent cases. Depending on the severity of the cases, the waiting time would vary. But for the two other types of cases, urgent cases and hospital inpatients, they will get treatments within the same day.
Mr. Jay? I hope I'm not asking for too much. I have a follow-up question. For inpatients in a hospital suffering from toothache, are they going to get much faster treatment services than those who are waiting outside a clinic? Well, Mr. Jay, it seems to suggest that dental service is faster in inpatient, for an inpatient. But I have to point out that the cost of treating inpatient is much higher than outpatient. No one suffering from toothache will be admitted to a hospital for treatment except in cases of serious infection or the trauma, trauma cases arising from an accident. For inpatients, the dental service is mainly about treatment of tumor in the neck and head or other operations might affect the oral health of the patient. So the treatment is mainly for a tumor or for trauma, not for the tooth or for toothache. And some other patients may suffer from other diseases as well. That's just broadening dysfunction or heart disease. And he, the patient requires dental service, which can only be conducted in a hospital. The frontline healthcare workers would monitor what kind of conditions should be treated inside a hospital. Well, I was just trying to explore some possibilities. We know that whether intentionally or not, some resources of hospitals are the misuse by patients. So I was concerned whether people would be able to get dental service much quicker if they are admitted to a hospital. That's my concern. That's just a comment, right, Mr. Chair? I think the secretary has partially responded to the concern, but I don't know whether such a problem really exists. The DOJ said they don't have any breakdown information on the cost of their service. For HA, dental service expenditure, forty-five million. But the total expenditure for HA is ninety-four point nine billion dollars. So only a very, very small part is spent on dental services. Is that the reason why the waiting time is so long, thus attracting a lot of criticism? While HA services cover a wide range. And dental services only constitute a very small part. For example, they also treat oral tumor, oral oncology cases. Otherwise, this patient will be treated in outpatient clinics. We are equally concerned about misuse or abuse of medical resources. We have seen cases whereby people go to the A and E department when they have a toothache. The cost of A and E service is close to two thousand four hundred per patient. Our A and E colleagues would add as a gatekeeper. And perhaps the details can be provided by Dr. Ko of HA. Now, annually, we provide a budget of ninety billion dollars to HA. And in comparison, dental service provided by HA is only a small part. But the government also provide dental services in other areas, including those provided by HA for students, collaboration scheme, healthy collaboration, LD service, CCF, elderly assistance, and also the elderly service provided to CSSA recipients. Altogether, we are talking about one point three billion dollars. That's the overall uh, ratio proportion taken up by dental service in the provision of public health care. Dr. Ko?
Well, in HA, usually we look at the clinical condition of a patient. For example, if someone comes to the, our A and E department with a condition which is not very serious, such as bleeding or or pus, we will not, we will not accord priority to such cases. So as not to affect other A and E patients.
Well, there are many questions that I would like to ask to follow up the speech of the secretary. Perhaps I can reserve my question for the second round. Uh, Ms. Carmen Can?
I have a question about page eight. There is pilot scheme for the healthcare voucher pilot scheme in the Samjin Hospital of Hong Kong Yu. It was launched in October twenty fifteen and then regularized later. So people can use a healthcare voucher at the Hong Kong Yu Samjin Hospital. And it said that the expenditure is recorded on a, on the basis of the entire hospital. So there's no separate statistics. And the Bureau has indicated that there will be improvement to the compilation of statistics in the future. Can this be done in conjunction with the Hong Kong Yu Samjin Hospital? So elderly, how many, do you have the total number of elderly patients picking use of this service at the Hong Kong Yu Samjin Hospital? And are you going to have breakdown figures for different types of services? When it comes to using of the elderly healthcare voucher system at the Hong Kong Samjin Hospital, University of Hong Kong Samjin Hospital, we can, we have the total numbers, the numbers pertaining to the outpatient and inpatient clinics. We can provide a statistics later on. Uh, Dr. Lam?
The service providers in Hong Kong offering services under the healthcare voucher scheme is based on the number of their specialties, whether there is
based on the number of their specialties, whether there is a C M P or doctor or dentist. But for the University of Hong Kong Samjin Hospital pilot scheme is institutionally based in terms of statistics. So we don't have any breakdown on whether it's a doctor, western medicine or Chinese medicine. But it, we're based on their specialties such as ophthalmology, the internal medicine, A and E, et cetera. We have figures pertaining to different specialties such as dental in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. The number of cases for University of Hong Kong Samjin Hospital twenty twenty two, five hundred fifty six twenty twenty three, one thousand two hundred and sixty nine. And the audit report asks for breakdown in a better way. But even for specialties, that there will be different services. For dental services provided by the University of Hong Kong Samjin Hospital for twenty twenty two, one hundred seventy thousand. Uh, twenty twenty two, forty, four hundred sixty two thousand. Well, according to the secretary, you can provide breakdown figures according to the number of transactions and number of services. So perhaps you can provide the services on that basis after the meeting. So that we know how much is expand on dental services or on other services covered by the audit report. We can see a substantial increase in the number of transactions or cases from twenty two to twenty three. Can that be done, Dr. Lam? Yes. Uh, Ms. Ken, follow up question? No. Uh, Mr. Paul Chair? Some of the points covered by the uh secretaries opening submission can be followed at other sessions, but I would like to look at the number of manpower loss. Ms. Yuenis Young talk about the differences in pay and service conditions. What about immigration? Is that a problem? I think the manpower shortage faced by different sectors in Hong Kong are multi, uh, is multifaceted. We don't have any information on the extent of or the share of the uh cost taken up by immigration. We know that may be a pop, a question, a factor, but we don't know how much weight should be given to that. And there's also the question of imbalance between public and private health care. Because the private dental care takes up a vast, the vast, a vast majority of the share of services provided to the community. We've been talking about possible reforms to the system, such as having imposing a means test. And that not everyone will be eligible to use the government dental services. Well, I, I welcome such a development. If people don't have the uh financial means to seek private services and they cannot get a this quota from public clinics, what can be done? Dr. Lam? At present, we provide the services to everyone. We don't differentiate between those who can afford or who cannot afford private services. So from our colleagues. Well, uh, have a identify some cases whereby we have a domestic helpers seeking service. And so the employers should actually pay a part. Well, we want to make sure that the service mode will not deprive the needy of a chance to get service from us. So we have other schemes to provide these services to the underprivileged. Uh, I know something is being done to the dentist registration system. I don't, don't know whether you know this. Perhaps our age difference is such that you, that you may not understand that it, when we were young, we have Filipino dentists or dentists trained in the Philippines and other dentists offering extractions service. I'm not being offensive to anyone, not any domestic helpers. But understand that in recent years, dental service in Taiwan has developed to a much sophisticated level, is even better than what we have in Hong Kong. Well, we want to offer emergency services, but the system should be, should not be made too complicated so that people suffering from severe toothache can get immediate relief. I think my age is such that I can talk about these things with you. I'm older than you, in fact. For the two issues you raised, I look at it from different, to different perspective. First of all, illegal or unregistered dentists in a current war city. Well, that's not a form memory, that's a very sad legacy. We should not rely on unregistered dentists to solve our service needs. Uh, the D O P H will step up enforcement. We have discovered recent cases of unregistered dentists practicing in Hong Kong and affecting our community's health. So I will certainly not encourage people to revert back to what we had in the past, and that is seeking service from unregistered dentists. Well, actually, yes, we are going to allow more dentists trained overseas to get registered. For example, those trained in the Philippines, we allow them to register back then. That's why we need to amend the dental registration, dentist registration ordinance. That if they are, if someone who has received uh good training outside Hong Kong, they should be accorded a registration path. And we are not just talking about those trained in the Philippines, but also other, in other countries.
Mr. Emmen Wong? We've been talking about resources, so I would like to ask the government. If we're going to increase our dental services substantially, how much resources would be needed? For example, say if we want to increase ten thousand, this, how much resources will be needed for that? Secretary?
Well, I don't have the figure at hand, uh, but I can provide that to members in due course. Mr. Wong? I think we're just talking about resources here. If we have unlimited resources, then I think the government can provide a lot of services. Well, the administration has said that they want to increase the number of this. But if everyone comes to us, then there would also be other concerns as raised by my colleagues. Well, given the existing resources, I think it is difficult to increase the number of this allocation. Well, according to the paper, we can only see that there is only a gap of about eleven to twenty nine percentage shortage, but the secretary has just told us that we have a manpower shortage of thirty percent. So there is also a gap in the salary between H A and D H dentists. So if there is no additional resources, then it will be difficult to resolve the problem. So secretary, we are now in a tight financial position. We have to decrease expenditure by one percent. So how can you increase resources for dental service? Well, overall, I think for dental service, we agree that resources is limited for the community. That's why we have to adopt the right strategy. First, we try to go for cost effectiveness. Second, we have to prioritize rights. Well, from the government's perspective, we have emphasized that we want to focus on preventive care. Second, we want to support the underprivileged. We want to provide service for them. For this strategy, we think that for certain areas, we have to make good use of the non-government and the private service. For example, for the secondary school students, we have a dental program for them and we have a pilot scheme. And we want to make use of the uh private sector resources and go for a co-payment scheme. And we want to maximize the resources and try to prioritize issues rights so as to serve the particular groups in need. Mr. Wong, I have no further questions, but I really hope that the administration can go back and review the two percent fraction of the services for civil servants to be used for the public, that was since nineteen forty seven. So if there is a demand from the public, please study how we can have extra resources. And we have to look at the costs involved. And I think we should allocate resources for such purpose. I have no further questions. Recently, we have also looked at how we can arrange for the elderly to reside in the Greater Bay Area in the elderly home stair. And I also noticed that a lot of Hong Kong citizens are going to Samjin for dental service. And some of our dentists have actually opened up clinics in Samjin. So that may be a way to have some of our patients being diverted away from the public service. And also please see how we can help our Hong Kong citizens to satisfy their dental service needs. Next, Ms. Carmen Ken?
Well, Chairman, an observation, my observation is similar to yours. I just asked about the Hong Kong Yu Samjin Hospital. In twenty twenty three, we can see that for, well, maybe it is not just confined to dental service. I think the figure that administration has just told us about four hundred and sixty two thousand dollars. If you look at twenty twenty three, only up to October, uh, the voucher claims accounted for three hundred fifty one million dollars in twenty twenty three. So would you try to have greater use of the vouchers in the Hong Kong Yu Samjin Hospital? I would like to follow up on paragraph one point ten. Well, the table may not appear again, but for the sake of convenience, let's look at table six. This is about the cases and expenditure of the elderly dental assistance program, E D A P. Now, this is funded by the C C F, the Community Care Fund. We provide subsidy for the underprivileged elderly, but they are required to have removable dentures. Is that the reason for the low usage? If you look at twenty twenty two, twenty three, you have twenty nine thousand six hundred seventy three applications, but completed cases is only about nineteen thousand six hundred and ninety one. It is only a figure of sixty six percent. That is the lowest among the six financial years there. So how do you consider a case as completed? Are you looking at the completion of the removal denture fixing? But if you look at the figure of twenty two, twenty three, this is a very strange year because you have the highest number of applications, but the lowest number of completed cases. Well, I noticed that during the secretary's speech, he's saying that there would be improvements. It will not be a requirement for the elderly to undergo dental, uh, denture fixing. Secretary, can you supplement?
Well, for the voucher scheme being used as the Hong Kong Samjin Hospital, it is an integrated free A hospital in the mainland. Dentistry is one of the services provided by the hospital, but it also has its own limitations. As far as I know, they also have manpower shortage, also their citizens have great demand for dental service. So the requirements for making an appointment is even more stringent than that in Hong Kong. I think sometimes they have to wait for about a month before they can get the service. So because of the various limitations, it is not possible for the hospital as a whole uh to provide service for Hong Kong citizens who choose to receive service there. It is not easy for them to entertain all Hong Kong patients going up there. Uh, while Hong Kong citizens are treated as nationals there, they can make use of the service there. And also we allow them to use the elderly voucher in the Hong Kong Samjin Hospital. The second question concerns about the expenditure of the E D A P. As I have just said, come the third quarter, we plan to enhance this service. And the users do not have to really go for a removable denture. They can just go for oral checkup, filling, polishing, and scaping, et cetera. So I would like to ask Mr. Adely, Deputy Secretary, to take this question.
Well, thank you, Chair. Can I explain a bit about the figures in table six? For the number of applications, it has included the number of eligible elderly. So that means after initial screening, uh, we know that these elderly have the need for removable denture. Then they make an application. Well, Ms. Ken has asked about the completed column in table six. For completed column, it means that the procedure or the treatment has been completed. And then also we have reimbursed the claims to the dentist. That will be counted as a completed case. So the difference is not whether the elderly has a removable denture. Because when you look at the application column, that reflects the number of elderly who need a removable denture. But for the completed column, it includes information about completion of the treatment and also the reimbursement to the dentist concerned. Well, maybe I'll follow up later on. I want to know why the percentage is so low. If you say that the whole procedure has to be completed, then maybe the disbursement of claims have taken some time and also the dentist may not have made the applications in time. We'll follow up on that later. Next, Ms. Yu Hui Yan?
Chairman, I would like to ask for some figures concerning the manpower between the dental service and the dentist under the H A and the D H. I want to know about their salary remuneration. And also the uh And also the emergency services for eligible civil servants, retired civil servants and their dependents. Well, if we look at chapter two C of the relevant paper, page ninety six, paragraph twenty six, it is said that in twenty twenty one, the number of this has been increased by twenty five percent or fifty percent. So I think this is due to manpower shortage. Uh, Chairman, you have rightly pointed out that a lot of Hong Kong citizens now go to the mainland for hospital services, including barber service and dentist service and also medical checkups.
I have also come across some civil servants unions. Um, they have reflected to me that whether the government can take out insurance for them so that they get service from the private sector. Second, can resources be given for them to undertake service in the mainland? This would help try to divert some of the patients from our public healthcare system. So I really hope the administration will take into account the views of the civil service unions. Today, we're talking about dentist service, but there are other health services in need. Well, the number of this allocation has been decreasing because of manpower shortage. Now, we're also saying that we have to amend the dentist registration ordinance. This is not something that can be done quickly. You cannot have non-locally trained qualified dentists coming to Hong Kong quickly. Maybe you're talking about ten, fifteen years before the gaps can be filled. So I want to know in the long term, how can we address the question of long waiting time and also the problem of manpower shortage? So I hope the administration would actively consider the recommendations of the civil service unions. Uh, do you need administration's response? Well, I will want to have this supplementary information and I have just stated my views and observations. Secretary, any supplements?
Well, to put it simple, when we talk about cross-boundary health services with the development of the Greater Bay Area, we can see that people are concerned about health services, how we can live better in the one-hour traveling zone. When we talk about cross-boundary healthcare service, uh we are trying to roll out the voucher scheme uh which can be used in the G P A on a pilot basis. That will allow an choice for our citizens. If they choose to retire in the mainland, then they do not need to come back to Hong Kong every time for medical treatment. Uh, they can make use of the elderly voucher in the mainland. Uh, for the shorter term, uh we notice that for some of the services are in great demand. And we want to give our citizens more options. For example, for the dentist service, if there is the need for the citizens, we try to meet that. But for the long term, when we look at a place like Hong Kong, we have very high standard medical service. And we are also very efficient. We have a lot of recognition from places around the world. So we should actively try to address our own questions. And for the long term, I do not want to sort of transport my patients out of Hong Kong. As a responsible government, I think we should actively try to address the medical issues and try to resolve the problems locally here for our citizens. Well, for the short term, maybe some of our patients will go cross-boundary, say like for medical checkups. Then I think that's understandable, uh because it is a good option for our citizens. They have a choice. But for the long term, for serious illnesses, I think it is a responsibility of the government to address them here in Hong Kong. So any further questions on the first part? If not, then maybe let's take a break and we will resume back at eleven A M for second part on the emergency dental service and I would refer to Mister Emmon Wong then. Thank you.